Order the select board meeting on Wednesday, August 24th at 7:02 PM. We have everyone present from the select board. Now, can we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am. Whitehall allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Chief Simmons, do you want to go?
Yeah.
We have some appointments, resignations, and retirements.
We're past the clock, you know.
It's the Department right now.
No, thanks for giving us some attendance tonight, we appreciate it. So the first, I believe, is Captain Wilson, appointment to deputy fire chief. So Captain Wilson's been on our department for 35 years or so. For 26 of those years, he's been on direct over emergency medical services. And during that time, he's done an extraordinary amount of effort and time put into making our EMS, our operations successful, so. What else are they going to say? So he's cultivated excellent working relationships with our medical director, he's been a driving force of progression with our EMS delivery, and as a result, one of the highest regarded EMS providers in the area. And I can bring Dr. Thornton back if you want me to.
No.
Captain Wilson's also played a major role in our department's response to COVID, particularly with securing our ability to conduct testing at the fire department and implementing our mobile integrated healthcare program. In addition to all of that, he's been a captain and our training officer for the past five years. He's a certified fire instructor, a certified paramedic instructor, and most importantly, he's a good person with good values and character who's passionate about the success of the fire department. I'm very confident he'll excel in this role as deputy fire chief.
Any questions or comments from the select board?
No.
I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment. Actually, is there something after me? Sorry, I apologize. I'd like to make a motion to approve Michael Wilson, effective September 2nd, 2022, as the deputy chief.
September 11th.
Sorry, did I say what day did I say? I apologize. September, December, sorry. September, I'm sorry, September 11th.
There's two days.
Let's try this again. I'd like to make a motion to approve Mike Wilson as deputy chief, effective September 11th, 2022. Thank you, Christine.
Second. Second by Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
So the next two are for lieutenant and captain's positions. As you may remember, I was here a couple of months ago, requesting temporary appointments for Lieutenant Ferreira in Firefighter George at that time, so both of those individuals have been in temporary capacity in those positions, and they've been doing an excellent job. Lieutenant Ferreira, soon to be hopefully Captain Ferreira, has been on the job for 16 years. Firefighter George has been on for nearly six years now. And like I said, both of them have been doing an excellent job. These positions will now be permanent to fill the vacancy created by Deputy Keen's retirement.
So you're filling two shoes with...
Right.
Four shoes.
With trying, anyway.
Excellent. Any comments or questions? Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christopher Ferreira as permanent full-time captain and Joshua George as permanent full-time lieutenant, both with the effective start date of September 11th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Lieutenant George is on vacation. He won't be passing along his thanks.
Good for him.
Unfortunately, he's in a handbag, so. And that's all I have. Just one quick announcement, if I may, is that we just got a new website, just went live actually today.
Yay!
So should be more efficient, more user-friendly for the public to access information that would be useful to them, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Give some time, check it out.
Be back. You did make two our town website as well.
It will be by probably the end of the week.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Mike, do you want, do you want to let you go ahead with the proclamation?
Oh, yes. As we are all aware, Deputy Chief Keen is retiring, and I would like to offer to the select board this proclamation. If I can read it and share. Whereas Benton W. Keen III, a 47-year member of the Norton Fire Department, whose career fire service began in July of 1975, sorry that we had to actually put the year in there, as a call firefighter while attending Norton High School, was appointed to the Norton Fire Department in November 1979, was one of Norton's first certified AMTs, and went on to be appointed lieutenant in 1991, captain in 2008, and deputy chief in 2009. And whereas Deputy Chief Keen has been instrumental in keeping the town of Norton safe by modernizing fire code enforcement and prevention while authoring the department's current operating guidelines and policies. And whereas Deputy Chief Keen authored a state grant in which the town was awarded $1 million to expand the fire department's personnel, which ultimately allowed the reopening of Chartley Fire Station. And whereas Deputy Chief Keen has mentored numerous rookie and veteran firefighters while providing leadership in many town crises through each step of his career. And whereas during his distinguished 47 years of service, Deputy Chief Keen has been dedicated public servant and active member of this community and devoted husband to his wife of 41 years, Michelle, father of his four daughters, grandfather to his 15 children, and servant to the community that he loves. And whereas today, the town of Norton celebrates and reflects upon the accomplishments of Deputy Chief Keen, as well as his leadership, friendship, professionalism, and entiring service. Be it resolved, the select board of the town of Norton does hereby recognize Benton W. Keen III, I'm going to say Benny, just one second, Kevin, as an honorary citizen of this community, proclaims that September 10th, 2022 be Benton W. Keen III Day, and encourages all residents to recognize the commitment and achievements of Deputy Chief Keen in protection and betterment of our town, to congratulate him for his dedication and service, and to leave him with the knowledge of, as he retires from our community, and he, I'm sorry, community, the, he will be missed by both colleagues and the community, given on this, given under this hand this day of August in the year 2022. Thank you very much.
They'll actually be the first time since I was 13 that I don't be hanging around a fire station. A long time. But you have an excellent crew here and a great department. It's been a pleasure to serve the department.
Thank you. Thank you. We have an appointment of Nancy Robbins Federiki as a permanent member of the Historic District Commission. Do we have any comments, questions?
I'm sorry, that's the Historic Commission?
Yes.
I am.
District. I actually showed them that way that night.
You did?
I did. 20 years ago.
Wow.
When I first moved here.
You were 12.
Just saying. Yeah, I was 12. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nancy Federiki, or Robbins Federiki, as a permanent member of the Historic District Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to Nancy.
I would have massacred her last name.
What?
I would have massacred her last name if I didn't hear it first.
I think I just did it. All right, I want to make a motion to approve the minutes for April 28th, 2022, and August 10th, 2022.
Some moved.
Second.
All those approved?
Aye.
To obtain for the 28th.
Okay.
We have to, because we weren't on... No, we don't have to. No, we can. Even if we weren't here, we can.
Any opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved for both April 28th and August 10th. Yes, now we have to open the...
Yeah, just before you, you've got a couple of minutes before you get into the public hearing. The superintendent is off for next Tuesday and Wednesday, because today they were having a walk-through down at the field and the training project, but I told them that we have a meeting, so he's off for next Tuesday and Wednesday. Just wondering if you have a preference.
I'm available both dates after 5:30.
Tuesday would be preferable to me.
Tuesday for me, because I am out of town Wednesday through Friday.
Tuesday's bound to me, too.
I'm not around at all, so.
Mike, is it open to the public? Mike, is Tuesday's meeting with the school going over to the public?
Yes, you can...
I don't think it's supposed to be a meeting. I don't think it's an official meeting, is it?
Yeah, no, it's just a walk-through.
It's just a walk-through, so it's not really, it's just a walk-through. So I don't know.
Walk-through, right? You want to come?
Yep. All right, someone needs to help me with, hopefully, the public hearing.
It's not a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Want me to approve it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there anyone here from National Grid?
Sheila.
Hey. I have been, thank you, Christine.
Yeah, you can pull that back, I'm sorry.
It was because of the...
We make you look furniture, so.
That's all right. Move it back next to you somewhere, Mike, so.
I think that's, that's right in front of my view.
Who wants to see me in it?
Actually, you may want to just push it forward just a little.
They have to come towards us.
Do you want to raise the camera, Mike? And then move it down.
It's a box.
Afraid to touch it, but.
He's going to listen.
Have faith, have faith.
He's going to knock that cord out.
You had no idea it was that agile.
Is this on the agenda?
I could help him, but it would be more fun to watch it this way.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that.
Turn it towards you.
Other way.
Other way. Keep going. One more. Good.
Yeah, totally.
All right, what is yours?
So first pole is a stub pole on Taunton, Taunton Street, Taunav, 306 Taunav. So right now, there's a tree guy, which we don't do anymore and we're bound to fail. So I guess the tree is dying, customer wants to remove the tree to provide the same sort of engineering tension relief there when your stub pole across from, say, pole 2255. So there's another pole with a tension wire going from that pole to this pole, and then an anchor behind it, so they can eliminate the tree guy.
Madam Chair, did you want me to say your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Michael Parent. I'm out of Hopedale, Massachusetts, 245 South Main Street, for National Grid, senior designer.
What was the name again?
Michael Parent.
And Madam Chair, may I just ask an inquiry? A tree guy, wires per customer, what's a tree guy?
So if we have poles on the side of the road, and it does any deviation from that pole, like say the next pole down, is not in line with it, then it tends to cause tension in one way or another. So in this case, the tension is pulling towards the other side of the road. So right now, the tree on the other side of the road is pulling it back, so it has a wire in the pole that attaches to a tree. So the tree is dying, customer wants to remove the tree, so in order to duplicate that, we need another pole where you attach the same wire to that pole.
And they...
Yeah, well, the wire from that pole, be a slight angle coming down, but then this pole will have an anchor behind it with a guy wire into the ground, that'll be an anchor, oh, sorry, an angle.
And, okay. Madam Chair, has there been any, and I'm going to ask, I know the, I know the expense and all that stuff, we do a lot of maintenance and all these poles and stuff, has there been any discussion about burying this stuff? And they know, probably go to every town, and they ask the same question.
It's very costly, and some older towns are not sure what's in the ground, exactly where it is, so there's definitely a cost to it. I have had some other towns inquire about it, even for small sections of town, it's just, it's very costly.
Cost whatever.
Yeah, so sometimes I was trying to do it while they were doing the road, but it still is going to be too much, because we have equipment on some of the poles that can't be buried underground, it has to be above ground, and all the transformers have to sit above ground. So now you have to find spots for this stuff where you're going to put it, and if it's, you know, on a main street, sidewalks and stuff like that, these items, when they, when they go from overhead to on the ground flat, they just take up too much room, so sidewalk space is not there, stuff like that, so.
Just wondering, is there a general, like, so I know construction, right, construction's so much a square foot, in something like this pole, is there a number that, we won't know what you do, but is there a general number for burying lines per foot, or, you know, is it...
I don't know.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was an industry standard.
No, I mean, there could be, I just don't know about it. I mean, whenever somebody brings it up, it's just like, it's a tiny idea, and so.
Thank you.
Are there any residents that have any questions that are here? Yes. I knew some of us here, but some aren't.
Do you, do I need to stand up? Can I ask a question from here?
You can stand up, that's fine. Come on up. Just say your name and where you...
Dennis Levine, 307 Taunton Avenue.
Oh, there you go.
So during the removal of the poles, is the power going to be cut?
No, it has nothing to do with the power itself, it's just, it's just tension, so, so I'm not sure exactly where they plan on setting the stub pole, but it's almost like a chicken and the egg thing where they can't release the tension easily, so they have to try and put the pole in place, or have something hold that pole back, or maybe have a truck hold it, and then, in this case, the tree's further back, so further back on the property.
Right.
So they can just set a pole.
So that's in the property across the street from me, so the pole that is currently on my edge of my property is supposed to be replaced. Does that pole completely get removed, or do they just cut it and leave part of it buried, and then put the new pole next to it?
Depends on the scenario. I'm not exactly sure what's on that pole.
So we have a transformer on that pole?
Yeah, so there's no, there's no underground, so what we usually do in circumstances like that is we set a pole next to it, like right next to it, and then we'll, it could, depending on the age of the pole, it could be a taller pole.
It's old.
Yeah, so in all likelihood, it's going to be a taller pole, we'll install that, we'll transfer all our wires to it, we'll cut it down to the next utility, which is cable or telephone, and then they have this memory called ball and court where stuff goes to that utility and they have to come move their stuff, and they cut, and then usually lasting office telephone, and our, our agreement with the telephone company is we install all poles and they remove all poles, so it'll be up for the telephone company to come, transfer this stuff, and remove the pole.
Okay.
So, so there's...
Make sure that questions, all questions go to the chair, and I apologize.
That's right, that's right. Go ahead.
So the transformer, there might be a minor outage, maybe like, maybe 15 minutes or so, they could install that stuff ahead of time and then just switch it over, instead of like having a long outage, that's what they usually do, is they set everything up and they just do a quick switch over to the primary tap, so.
Okay.
But it won't be like four hours or anything like that, I mean, unless they run into a problem, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a long outage at all, so.
Is there a prospective date that this is supposed to occur on?
It'll, you know, so we have to, we usually wait for the paperwork to come back from the town, we have a new procedure where we don't do that, for it gets approved, we come back and we say it's okay, so it has to fit into our schedule, so it's at least, we schedule at least two weeks out, plus it's summertime, so it's all depends on the barn that covers this area, which I believe is the Alabaro Mine, so I work at Hopedale, so I can't speak for them, so.
So there shouldn't be an interruption to service, so.
No, not, not any likely time, and if there was, all the customers involved would be notified.
Right.
And so that is, will we get notification on, well, not, not so much for the power outage, but will we be notified when these poles are going to be replaced?
No, they won't, they don't notify the customers, unless, unless you were directly involved, like it was a project you were working on, you needed the pole.
But you're saying the interruption would be like minimal?
Correct.
15 minutes kind of thing?
So if it was a longer outage, they would, our outage group would get a list of all the people that are affected by this, like the services affected, and they would notify them, say, hey, we're going to have an outage for two hours, four hours, whatever, and give it a plan of time, not, not going to say, hey, here's the announcement today, it's going to happen tomorrow, it'd be like a month out, then, you know, they might say, hey, at a certain date, a couple of weeks after that, we're going to, we're going to do some work there. Sometimes they go around door to door, you know, of the people off of that area, and if people home, they'll say, hey, you know, just, just let you know, you might experience an outage, but if it's not for very long, they probably won't do that.
And so where, after the paperwork is filed and everything, you're talking potentially two to three weeks that this...
I would probably say at least, at least a month.
Okay.
But it all depends, I mean...
Before the snow flies.
Oh, yeah, definitely do, well, I hope we do it before the winter comes, but you never know, but yeah, if it's approved today, it's August, yeah, we should have it by the fall, like, you know, Octoberish sometime.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we vote to close the hearing?
To accept.
I'm sorry, these votes are ridiculous, but.
We just closed it.
We just closed it.
Approved.
Now we're going to make a, is there a motion to approve the petition to...
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're going to open, right, the next public hearing.
Motion to open the next public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Do you want to again state, I guess you're going to be the...
Sure.
Second public hearing for the poll.
My name is Michael Parent. I work for National Grid at Hopedale Office, 245 South Main Street, Hopedale. I'm here about a project for a Norton Rail Trail. The first area that we're looking to move some poles for the project is Cobb Street. Looks like there's three poles at the beginning of Cobb where it meets off to Washington Street. They need to be moved five feet off the road, looks like for the pathway, and then there's a pole that isn't being moved, but in moving the poles back the five feet, it creates what they call a corner on it, which is the same situation I'm talking about with the, with the tree guy, so they want to install a pole across the street from that to offset the tension for pulling that pole back across the river, so.
Are there any questions from the select board?
No.
Are there any questions from residents? Yes, hold up, stick your name and...
Sure. Hi, I'm Warren Grant. I own the property at 166 and 86 on Cobb there, right on the corner, and the next one.
The side of that, sorry.
Which side are you on, Warren?
Okay.
So it's North Washington.
Yeah, this is my property I own.
Okay.
And it looks like you're moving them off the right of way. Is that true?
That's what it looks like, but I mean, this is a, this is a project, I don't know if it's state or town, but it looks has to do with a bike path, so this, it's not National Grid, we're moving the poles for the, for the town's purpose of installing this.
I think it would be a benefit in this case to put all that underground through this stretch. It already comes underground over the bridge on North Washington. Couple of years ago, that pole hit my building, and now we're moving even closer, and plus you're going to have the bicycles, the grating over there, you have an overpass coming down, they're going to be flying, and they're going to be very close to everything, and it's kind of a, bit of a hazard.
So, I mean, I don't know what issues are going on here with the poles in the existing locations, and if they're, it's a town.
This one came down and hit the building.
Okay, but, so any of the other poles have an issue with the town, or have had accidents happen on a regular basis where they need protection?
They don't come down regularly, but...
But, so our, our philosophy is least cost to serve the customer, which in cases the town, so we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even entertain that idea for the cost of doing that, I don't even know what utilities exist there already, the easiest course of action is if the, if the town's moving the best five feet...
Well, the easiest way isn't always the best way.
Well, it's least cost to serve, so we're going to go, we're not going to put it underground if it's going to be...
There's about $5 million being spent on this bike trail, so I don't think cost is everything, I think safety is a big part of all this.
We have plenty of poles that are, that are on the road that have, could be issues for people to run into at any point in time, but this is a problem, then we, then we work with the town to protect it, either have guardrails, I mean, that would have been the case already existing, if these were already problems, then we would have worked at the town's sales.
They don't show my building on these...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
We should be having concerned citizens come up and ask the board questions, and then allow the gentleman to respond afterwards.
Sure.
There shouldn't be a back and forth debate.
Okay, can I ask you questions?
Absolutely.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to put that underground right there?
I'm for putting all of it underground, but, you know, as you said before, the cost is pretty, pretty high.
Mike, do you want to, you know, to our, our town manager, and him speak more to...
Kind of representative to the NFN Madam Chair.
It's all on you, Mike. So the question was, going back to five feet, they're still going to be in the layout.
Okay.
They're not going to be beyond the layout, so I just wanted to make that clear.
And Mr. Town Manager, Madam Chair, for you?
Right now, if you looked, they're right against the pavement there, they're close to the pavement.
They're close, yeah.
So this will make it safer by moving them in from many cars hitting...
To my sidewalk.
Right.
They don't show the building on these layouts for some reason, the building's very close to the street due to the fact when they rerouted North Washington for the highway, changed the dynamic quite a bit, and now we're coming in with a pretty heavily sloped pedestrian trail right there, which is going to be very interesting, with everybody utilizing gravity over there, with skateboards and who knows what.
So I don't, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but the rail trail is flat, it's not down the hill.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it's not, there's...
Have you seen when they're coming off of North Washington Street to get onto Cobb Street, there's about a 12 to 18-foot elevation change in a very short distance?
It does drop.
That's this.
If you're coming, if you're on, if you're coming over 495, and you're on North Washington, then coming down to Cobb, there is like a drop there, there's a new house on the left of Cobb that's kind of set down.
But how, but where's the rail trail? I thought the rail... But how, but where, but where's the rail trail? I thought the rail trail was where the old bike path-
On, on North Washington, um, there's a bike lane going across on the bridge.
Oh, that's what we're discussing, okay.
Yeah, where the poles are, that's what brought me into this, 'cause they're talking about the poles. So I said, I wanna come up and hear what they have to say about the poles.
Understood now, okay, thank you.
'Cause they're in a high, it's gonna be a high-speed zone, I'm gonna call that, because gravity works.
And, and Mr. Grant's house is, so you're on North Washington, you turn on a Cobb?
Yeah.
You just go beyond his house to hit the trailer?
Yeah, that's where, okay, that's where, I was, I thought you were talking about the other part of it. It was the before, before your house, okay. Yeah, thank you.
The original railroad bed is quaint level.
Black, yeah.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Um, Mike, has the MFN looked at this area, 'cause this is a pretty unique area, um, of down, have they looked at, has the engineers looked at maybe one or two of these poles, even that first one burying it? Because I could see, I could see the residents' concern where you take a right into that churn, uh, right, right there, and it's a hard right.
Um, well, that wouldn't have anything to do with the MFN, that would-
That would be the town?
Yeah.
So, I have a question. Um, so this trail pathway, is it another lane in the road? Or is it like a sidewalk area with like a berm or a, a curving?
It's gonna be in the road on North Washington, and then when you come down Cobb, it'll be-
In my living room, excuse me.
There'll be a sidewalk.
So there'll be some sort of-
You're a part of me, I'm sorry.
There'll be some sort of curving or, or berm to, to, to at least, okay, so. So there's some, so there, there is potential, if you had a problem there, to put some sort of guide rail to protect the trail path between the road and the pole line?
There is a guardrail on the south side of Cobb Street right now, and that's gonna be, uh, maintained.
That wouldn't affect the poles?
Well, it would, i- if you're worried about still, I mean, I know you're worried about the pole being close to the property, but also somebody having the ability to come around on the corner and hit that pole and knock into it. So if there was some sort of guardrail protection, that, that would help the situation not have that ability to do that.
Any other questions or concerns?
Hold on.
Yep.
Hold on.
Come on up, stick your name and where you live.
Hello, my name's Mike McGrath. I live on 164 North Washington Street. We have a colonial on the other side of the bike path. Uh, just wondering if, that is a very, very dark area. I don't know if you've ever been down there at night, or like, what bikers are going down there at night. Um, but I think if they're gonna put the poles in, I think there should be lights on those poles in case a person on a bike, uh, is riding at night, and a car doesn't see him because they go flying around that corner, and they're gonna get killed. So I think lights, if you're, if the, if the poles are gonna be up, that now is the time to put lights on those poles for, for the safety of the, um, bikers and pedestrians and, um, anyone else if they stay up. And also, after you come over that bridge, if you take a right onto Cobb, there needs to be some sort of stop sign over, once you get past that bridge, just before you take that right. Uh, because the cars can, cars can run that corner up very, very fast. Um, so then, this, this should be like a stop sign when you come over the bridge to have everybody stop, look, instead of going around the corner at eighty miles an hour, flying down that, down Cobb Street. Um, there should be a stop sign up there also. Yeah, lights are a big part, because they come flying, they do donuts in the, you know, at night, and somebody gets, somebody's gonna get killed at night. So there needs to be some sort of stop sign and lights on that road. So if you go down there tonight, it's a very dark road.
I know, I live right around there. So I know exactly what you're talking about.
Oh, Mike, was, was there, was there any talk about what you, uh?
Um, well, that's, we're doing that. Keith actually was looking out there today. There won't be lights on every pole, but, um, there is no light at that intersection now, so he's looking at installing a light down there.
And has, um, I'm at three, Madam Chair, um, has, um, I was gonna call him Charlie, has Officer Turkot done, been over there and, and reviewed that for a trade, has we set a stop sign for the safety of that or anything?
Yeah, I don't know if he has. I'll, I'll check with him.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, just a question for Mike. Um, so I'm assuming that as we go ahead with the rail trail, we're gonna have more and more of these types of issues coming up, right? Like, there's gonna be safety issues or concerns of residents. Is there a process by which they can, um, express their, their issues and have them, you know, have them addressed?
Sure. If anyone has, uh, any issue they wanna address, send me an email. Um, I'll forward it to the engineers and, uh, get it addressed.
Okay.
I mean, this was specific, obviously, for National Grid to come in and talk about where they're gonna move the poles and all that. Um, other concerns, lighting's not your concern, or, uh?
Well, does the town own the lights here? I'm not sure.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, so it's up to you guys. If, if it was still with us, you would, it'd still be a question to the town from us, and we just put them in and stuff.
Actually, Keith said today, he thought there was a light there, but when they replaced the pole, maybe, it wasn't ours at the time, it was National Grid's before we took them over, so he'll put one up.
That's a dark road.
'Cause if they, if I'm not mistaken, they had one on the o- other side, and there used to be one right on that side, so you could see that in a second. Um, Madam Chair, just one, one quick question. I, I just wanna make sure we're addressing the pole situation. I mean, there's a lot of poles all very close to each other right here, and that's a right-hand churn. And I, and, and I mean, I'm looking at it through a diagram, it seems like it's a right-hand churn into a pole. Um, and, and I don't wanna hold this up, but I don't wanna, I, I mean, I think this is the time where we say, can we look at that and try to say, is the town, look at that and say, all right, is there a way to bury that first pole at least, you know, or, or, or so forth, to kind of limit that risk, 'cause I'm looking at a drawing, I could see where-
It's very congested group, and once that trail comes into the turn, they're gonna be all right in it with a downward acceleration, which'll be fine on a bike. I'm all for the bike trail, like I told Mike, just not in my living room. It's a good use of it all. But the, the wire situation, it enlightened me when the whole side of the street fell down and one hit my building. I was very surprised that that can even happen. And they were about to change the one that failed. The new pole was already there. It was the one on the other side of North Washington, where it comes under the bridge and comes up. That one broke, and it let the whole side of the street come down, and because there's a guide wire on that one, it leaned over and clipped my building. Which I was lucky, it didn't, it didn't do much, could've been a lot, lot worse.
So, so Madam Chair, just a clarification through, any question for National Grid here? So if I'm not mistaken, the wires are actually in the bridge as they cross over, and then they go up to the pole, is that, is that, may I ask?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that, with the engineering on there, but it, it makes sense under a bridge that it, that it may do that, but that, that's about the only circumstance, you know, like, with going underground, if we had to go under a bridge. It's, you know, the choice of going under a bridge or over a bridge depending on the height and how to, you know, if it was tougher to get over the bridge, then we would put it under the bridge. But that's also, uh, conversations we have with engineering groups, where whoever has to do the work in the area.
Just, um, so the wires are on North Washington, and they come to the pole on the opposite side of Cobb Street, and then they cross to Cobb Street from that pole. So where Cobb and North Washington meet, on the other side of North Washington, there's a pole there. The wires come from that pole down to Cobb Street.
I'm, I'm sorry for my confusion. On the Mansfield side, or on the Mansfield outside, that's where they're on a pole there?
Right.
'Cause that's what the diagram shows.
So they go, they're, they're above ground on North Washington, and once you come down-
Over the bridge?
Over the bridge to Cobb, they're on the opposite side of North Washington.
They come up from the bridge?
Yes, they go back overhead.
They come up the bridge, they cross over the bridge, and then go up. They have to, right?
I don't, I don't know if they're underground on the bridge.
They are somehow. It's somewhat subterranean there, 'cause I had to move one of the poles, and we were involved with some trenching on the other side of the bridge at one point. So there's definitely some underground work going on over there, there's a transformer on each side. You know, just take one of those transformers, move it down, bury everything, just like that.
That, that's a discussion that, that's gonna have with the engineering group, as far as the, the project goes.
But I just look, it's a concern.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm wondering if we might be able to continue. I, I don't wanna slow projects up, but I'm, I would like to get some answers, like, and maybe actually maybe go see it myself and see if burying these is an option.
Okay.
I mean, is the town, Mike, like, what, what the impact would that have on the town doing that? I'm sorry, Madam Chair, for you?
Um, we, it won't be funded in the project, probably. We would have to pay for that, so I don't know what that would cost.
Well, you guys, you guys-
So just to remind you, this is, this is a public hearing, is whether we're gonna move poles, not about lighting, not about, um, wires. It's about moving the poles five feet, um, for National Grid. If we don't, we can take a vote on it and decide now, and then other things are gonna have to be taken up in terms of lighting, everything else.
Just for the record, we're, we're, we're going the petition process of asking to move the poles, but it's a town project, so. So basically, you're asking us to move the poles, but we're coming to say, can't really move the poles back, and, yeah, we're gonna understand that, you'd say, sure, 'cause we talked about it, somebody did it between the project and National Grid. And there were some other poles on that petition as well.
Yeah, on the back. On the Cobb Street.
On the other side of the road, being straightened?
Oh, okay, yeah.
They're just, they're moving, uh-
That'll be, that'll get the traffic moving.
And then two poles on the other side are going back a little further, ten feet.
Yeah, that's a tough spot right there.
How about you make a motion to oppose, uh, close the public hearing?
Um, second.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, so we're gonna close the public hearing. This doesn't mean we're not gonna continue conversations about lighting and other things, but we have to move on with our agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion, do we have to approve this?
Do you have a motion or a second?
Yeah.
No, those were closing. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition for National Grid. To move the pole, for the relocation of the poles. 'Cause again, as was stated, it's just a petition, it doesn't mean it's actually gonna happen, we're gonna review that part. So I'd like to move forward with the petition.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Next.
All right, so that public hearing is closed. All right, next, we're gonna review-
Thank you.
So it's, it's been approved that, that we can move the poles, okay?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure, okay.
Yes.
So they should, I should contact the group that's involved with the project to talk to the town about this, or are you gonna contact the group? 'Cause, 'cause if I go back and I, we have a list of requirements to, to move the job along, if I say, okay, it's okay to move the poles, that, that could put things in motion to move the poles?
Yeah, I mean, it's been approved. If we, it's, I mean, how fast are they gonna move?
Uh, yeah, that's, I mean, unless, uh, unless somebody's, I know, I know, uh, the projects on the older side, the, the work press numbers, looks like it's kinda on the older side, so I don't know how long it's been sitting around out there or in the plans, but, um, unless there's, you know, somebody pushing it somewhere else with the town or the company to get it done, I, I don't think it'll happen like tomorrow. It could, it could take a few weeks, and it could take longer, depends.
Okay.
They'll probably try and coordinate where they, they get all the, the poles, maybe, sometimes they bring them out to the site, and they leave them on the site for a little while, and then they, like, if they have it, haul them every day, uh, it's like five, six poles, so.
So if you could just give me a timeframe, when you know?
I'll, I'll give word back to the, the group that's handling this?
Yeah.
And, and have them contact the town so that, you know, so that you guys know, 'cause they could probably need police detail out there, um, and a lot of that stuff too, so. And they have to probably have traffic made in their plan, 'cause I'm in charge, so.
Madam Chair, point of inquiry. How do residents, um, if they feel they weren't satisfied with the public hearing and the decision to move those poles, how would they go about, um, addressing their concerns further?
Well, since it's been voted on, um, Mike?
Um, they could email me, I'll share them with you. And if I could share my screen, I can, uh, show, uh...
Are you okay?
So, uh, as far as the wires, I, I, I don't know, I, I'd have to look, but I seriously doubt that they go over the highway. Um, I think that, um, Cobb Street is more than likely fed by, um, the loop that comes down North Washington heading north, and then cuts from that pole down a Cobb. And I bet the other side of the highway is serviced from another loop, but I'm just, I'm just speculating, there may be, I don't know.
You don't even think, um, Mr. Town Manager, you don't think their wires even go in bridge? I know sometimes they put them underneath the bridge and then transfer them over that way.
I, I don't know, I would have to, uh, check on that, but I would doubt it. And this, this just gives you a better idea, um, if you can see that. Go ahead.
Can I just check this? So, this OHW says overhead wire, uh, it shows overhead wire, so that's, it goes all overhead wire across North Washington Street.
Right.
But, I can't exactly, uh, shows overhead wire on this side as well, running parallel to it.
So I don't know if that helps, uh...
So they cross, so there's a telephone pole at 161, if I'm not mistaken, my friend lives right there, so I know it's 161, North Washington Street, on the other side, cross Cobb. And so it looks like they go underneath the bridge? 'Cause there are wires that come up from a telephone pole right at 161, right at Cobb Street?
Uh, Mike, what are you gonna do with it?
What are we gonna do, the work? Um, no idea. I have, I have no control of scheduling and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. All right. We can have other offline discussions, but we kinda have to move on with the meeting.
All right, very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Quickly, uh, we wanna review or discuss the fall annual town meeting articles, including, but not limited to. And Mike Tool, this was your agenda item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In front of you, you will find a, two, two items. You will find a finance, um, Norton Finance appointing committee, as well as the actual article, the actual, what we're gonna change here. You can find a printed out PowerPoint. I apologize if we can't share this online, but, um, it is what it is. So if I, if you appease me and just let me do the eight presentations, then I can answer any questions.
So can I just make, um, excuse me, Madam Chair? So I think part of the reason, and I'm just trying to do what everybody else has done to me in previous things, um, we have these documents given up to us beforehand because we're supposed to read them. If you can just touch on the main points, I think that would be great, 'cause like we said, we have a time-
Yep.
We're trying to be efficient, we have guests here, um, but I think we can read off the PowerPoint, so if you wanna touch on the highlights, that'd be fantastic.
That would be, I'd be glad to do that, Mr. Bo. So the, the purpose of the, um, changes that we're making is to create a more inclusive and transparent process for selecting and renewing members of the finance committee, who oversee an approximate town budget of sixty-nine million. Um, what, what I'm proposing is a creation of a committee chaired by the moderator, and, um, has four elected boards within the town, the select board, the school committee, the planning board, and the assessors, uh, who will- and the assessors, who will nominate representatives annually to appoint, appoint and renew members of the finance committee. Currently, right now, the moderator does that alone, and on the second page, you'll see the actual process of how it would happen. The moderator would be the chair of this committee. The finance committee's responsibilities and reports and holds public hearings and makes recommendations to town meetings on articles on budgeting, zoning, and operations of the town. These are three major categories, and this is a very, very important committee. That's why I would like to propose a formation of a committee doing that. And I understand the concerns of like, why change it? It's broken. Well, when this was originally designed way back when, I couldn't even give you a date, just to give you an example, in 1990, the town budget was $17 million, approximately. It's now 69 million. And so, that's a substantial budget that is overseen by this committee, and I would love to see it changed and be, make it more inclusive. It would be the positives, the pros and the cons. The current appointing process is a closed process between the moderator and the appointee. You know, some say that it's non-transparent. It's, you know, a tough recruitment. What the committee would do is propose a, they would be required to follow open meeting law. It would be transparent and possibly might make recruitment easier. Currently, other towns, what they're, what they're doing, there seems to be a trend to moving towards an appointing committee. There are the 129 cities evaluated, Bristol County, Plymouth County, Norfolk County, Middlesex County, there are 129 cities and towns within there. Twenty-one, the cities do not have finance committees. Ten towns elect, 51 use an appoint, use the moderator appoint, 46 are using a committee to appoint, and one is appointing the town manager appoints. No chance in heck, Mike, we're going to allow that. I'm only teasing, this is the town manager. Requirements for changing would be changing wording for the town, for the charter and the bylaw, affirmative vote of town meeting, and affirmative vote of by-town election. The benefits of a select board versus citizens petition would be, the select board would be able to work on it, and we'd be able to make friendly amendments, at town meeting, we'd be able to make friendly amendments to, to changes on it. If a citizens petition, the reason I put citizens petition on there, I have been asked by citizens to actually place this through a citizens petition, but I do think it's important that the select board look at this as an option. I think there are changes of the makeup of the committee that could be considered changed, but I think this would be my first attempt at it. A couple of frequently asked questions. Well, how many towns are appointing committees? Forty-three percent of the towns evaluated are doing this, and it seems to be growing. It seems to be more people are moving into this direction. Isn't there, isn't there extra work? No, the appointment of the committee might take two to three times a year. What if the board does not appoint the individuals by the deadline? The members of the finance committee, the existing members of the finance committee, appointing committee, will appoint a resident. And are they required to follow up the meeting law? Yes. So, I believe this is an important change that we're making, and it brings, and it really does allow several people and elected members to play a role in appointing probably to one of the most important committees on, in the town. So, at that, at this point, Madam Chair, I would be glad to, I'm trying tonight to see if the select board would be open to supporting this, because we are up against a deadline to file a warrant for a citizens petition. So, I wanted to, before, before they filed it, and I said, let's wait, let's see if the select board would be open to supporting this concept of opening an appointing committee. So, I'm open to questions, Madam Chair.
Any questions, comments?
So, my biggest concern is that we just are trying to do this Traffic Safety Commission, where we're getting people from different committees already and joining to a new committee, you know, representatives from other committees, in, since you guys have been on, this is now the second time. So, this is stretching us by very thin, in my opinion. We already have Planning Permanent Building Committee, we have NOPE, we have, you know, like I said, Traffic Safety Commission, so I feel like we're stretching ourselves thin. I personally am not a fan of it. I would prefer to have residents who want to get involved, who have a lot more knowledge, who could have a lot more knowledge in the finance sphere, rather, or even municipal finance, something like that, because I personally would not elect myself to be on that, just because I don't feel comfortable yet with all the background of it, so that's just my.
Madam Chair, can I just clarify, just some points that Mr. Vog said? First of all, the appointing committee would be appointing members, so to your point, citizens still would be members of the finance committee, that's one. So, we would be, as one of the members, we would appoint someone to the finance, someone to be on this selection committee.
Then nobody in the select board would be on the finance.
Oh, no, not on the finance, no, of a selection committee.
Correct, correct.
Right, not on the finance.
So, nobody, right, nobody's going to be on the finance.
That's right. So, nobody's going to be on the finance committee, it would be creating committee that would be selecting people that would be on the finance committee. Okay? The second would be, I'm so sorry, I just was in the middle of writing down that second point, the appointing committee, it would be the appointing committee, and then it would be, I forgot, I apologize. But it's, I, so, for this time, and I recognize that we are, you know, we are busy and so forth, and I don't, the pureness of citizens and the finance committee is what makes the finance committee perfect, okay? I just want to make, get more eyes on applicants, and it may be just one applicant, right? That's, you know, we get to ask questions, we get to actually, in an open meeting, see the interview of that individual, and we move forward. I just think, as our budget gets bigger, and it is going to get bigger and bigger, I think it's important that we put a little more work into choosing members of the finance committee.
Madam Chair, yeah, I have, I have a lot of concerns with this article, so I'm going to ask some questions, and then I'd like to make a statement if I could about it, but the first question I have is, Michael, you meant, or, or you, is, we're, so we're talking about amending the charter of the town, because I guess, I guess I'm still trying to figure out, because this was brought before FinCom before, and I had the same question then, which is, I'm not sure what the problem is that we're trying to solve by making this change. So, I just want someone to articulate to me, what is it that we are doing? What problem are we solving by, by changing this process from the way it is now? Because I am unaware of any problems that we have ever had with the appointment of the, of the finance committee by the moderator.
I'm not going to answer for, for Mr. Tool, but I do want to just put my opinion in, because I had the same sort of question. Currently, right now, FinCom is appointed by one person, correct?
Yes, the moderator, who's elected by the town.
Who's elected by the town, yeah, absolutely. And this, in my opinion, this process would, would open that up to more elected officials having a say in who is put on, I mean, basically, one of the top two committees in the town, or boards in the town. I think having more eyes on something and more transparency is fantastic, and you can answer the question, I apologize.
Madam Chair. Mr. Snyder, the, the problem, I, I think we have to get, to get rid of this, we fix something because there's a, there's a problem. When you mentioned this problem, it's too late.
Okay, so what are, what are the potential problems?
So, what I see, what I see here is this is improving a process and getting more transparency, more openness to, to the process of the selection. Letting the townspeople, who may not attend town meeting, may attend it, but it's ever wrong enough to do this, they let them know who's making decisions regarding the finances of the town. I, right now, well, well, I don't think there's anything scrupulous going on with the moderator and the selection there, I would never, I would never go that far. I, I've never seen how the process is done. And I think this is a worthwhile venture to say, $69 million, maybe, a committee that decides on $69 million, decides what zonings are going to be done, I want to see the applicants that are being chosen or renewed to make these decisions, and I think the town has the right to see that. And so, I don't think it's, we use the word problem, I don't think there's a problem. What I think is, we can improve the process, and that's what this is, an improvement of the process.
Okay, so I don't understand how, how bringing in people whose budgets are reviewed by the, the finance committee improves the process. I think you're injecting the possibility of influence there, of people on the finance committee being influenced by the boards on which they are deciding whether or not to recommend their budgets for town meeting. So, you're injecting the potential of corruption, of, of unscrupulous behavior, of backroom deals, you're in, the primary advantage of having the moderator be the appointing body is that the moderator is independent. He doesn't have a budget. He doesn't come before the FinCom to ask for a budget. The select board does, the school committee does, the planning board does, these are all areas that their budgets are, are looked at and approved, well, not approved, but recommended by the, by the, the finance committee. So, I'm not sure why, I get what you're saying, and I know we've, we've, we talked about this at the, at the FinCom meeting, I get the idea that, you know, maybe more eyes on something is better, but maybe just because it's more eyes doesn't mean it's better. More eyes could be exponentially worse. So, you know, so that, that's another concern that I have. The other thing I, I would like to know is, you know, we have other, I think, you know, a couple of things, you know, the budget's growing, sure, you know, but we're, you know, that's, that's as much inflation as it is growth, so we're looking at, you know, 30 years and 40 years of, of inflation over the town budget. But, you know, we have other towns that are moving apparently to, to this new form. Is it working? Are they happy? Do they like it? Do they not like it? You know, just because, you know, we, you know, most, I think, I think it's the, the state that sets up the, the general, you know, structure of how the town governments work, and then the town governments have bylaws, right? That can amend that. So, the town government can come in and say, okay, well, we want to have a, a finance committee, appointing committee. But if you're starting off with the, the, all the towns in the state in, over the past 300 years, started off with a moderator making the appointments, of course, it's going to look like more people are moving to the new process, because they've got nowhere to move back. No one's going to move back after they moved it one way. So, what are these other towns, are they happy, are they not? I, I just, I would like some more information on, like, how's it working in other towns, not just that other towns are doing. So, you know, because they could, you know, 50 towns could be like, hey, we should have stuck with the moderator, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily know that.
And I would just like to add, again, going back to, you know, everyone's tap so thin, it's the same people, so we're just going back to the, then it becomes the same people are, are making the same decisions in the town, and I, I just feel, it's overwhelming to me, that we can't get people to volunteer for, you know, Recreation Committee, let alone, I, I don't see how changing the process is going to get better candidates, or to get more scrutiny over the candidates. So, to me, it's just sort of creating more bureaucracy that they don't really need right now.
I think, I think it's a good point too, Madam Chair, that, you know, you, we can't get people to run for Planning Board. You know, so, I also, I'm not convinced that this would be an improvement of the process, because, or it would make people more likely to be, because now you're going to have to come before a board and be in a public meeting, and you're going to have to sit before a board of five people and, and be interviewed for, for this position. I get, I get the idea of transparency, I, you know, I think that's, I think that's a fair point, but on the other hand, I think you're going to get fewer candidates for FinCom, and you're going to get, you're going to get more candidates. And I think that's, I think that's by an order of magnitude, I don't think that's going to be a small thing, I think you're going to have a lot fewer people who are interested in coming before a board of five people to, you know, to be evaluated for what essentially is an advisory board.
Madam Chair, I may have some of these concerns. So, you know, why the makeup of the committee? The committee is the elected, Mr. Snyder talked about some scrupulous that this may lead to this, well, these are elected individuals that have taken, have basically signed ethics papers, have taken ethics training as required by the state, and are sworn in from that. So, if they're doing anything scrupulous, we are all, we would be all, all to that. So, I'm a little offended by this word scrupulous, and I'm not sure if it was just, just a generic word in, in conjecture, but.
Well, you used the word unscrupulous, that's why I used it.
Okay, and it's, so, that's, that's one of the things that I just want to talk about, and the makeup committee is made of that, and it's appointed, it appoints someone, and they can appoint someone on that committee, or they can appoint someone in there to select it. The state sets up, actually, the towns set up the, the way the former government is, and this is something that was probably done a long time ago, and we as a town have changed. We are now 20,000 people, $16 million, and that's from 19, some 17 million to 69 million, it's more than just inflation. It's, it is. How do you talk about the, you know, I guess the question I have for you is, you talk about the process and, and how we, how we improve the process and this stuff, I challenge anyone on this board, what's the current process behind actual selection? There isn't one that's defined. They do, you do not know the questions that the moderator asks. We do not know how, what the criteria uses there, because this is not, this is a hidden process. And for, many of us talk about transparency in a lot of our meetings, and we've talked about it in this board as one of the goals for this year, you know, this is one of those things where this is a process, there is no transparency. So, I'm trying to open up the transparency behind this and actually have elected officials appoint people that will appoint members and renew members to the most important committee in town.
So, Mike, I think you, you started with saying that there is a citizen petition out there, and you wanted, you know, the select board to get behind it, because it would, you know, maybe create more cloud, and I get that.
It's not more cloud, it's, we have the ability to change, make changes on the floor and also to work on it, to that point, Madam Chair.
Okay. That being said, I think we're just at sort of a cross path where I, I think we're going to agree, we're going to have to agree to disagree here, because I don't think we're all on the same page in terms of, just in terms of appointing a committee to do that. So, I would, I would make a motion that we would vote on this, but.
Can I just, can I just, Madam Chair? You know, I agree with something you said, you know, adding more bureaucracy, I'm normally against that, in this case, I'm not, and for the sheer fact that, you know, Mr. Snyder had mentioned something about, you know, possibility of, you know, backroom deals and corruption. Right now, there's no transparency to this process. So, right now, there's one person, and I got one preface, is I don't think that there's anything nefarious going on, either now or before, but there's a huge potential for that. And when I first moved to Norton and I found out that that was how the FinCom was selected, I was, I was appalled by it. The one person gets to pick all these people that basically put everything in front of the town, and they handle all the budgets. So, I think, I think this transparency and adding someone from each of these boards is, is desperately needed.
But, but again, going back to the point that if it's a citizen petition or it's our petition, the bottom line, it's the citizens' choice. If they want to have this, then that's their choice, they'll vote for a town committee. You know, I guess, I know you're coming here to get support from the select board, and I don't think we're going to have the full select board support, so the next step would be then recommend the citizens' petition to move forward and let the town vote on it, like.
So, before we vote, I, I mean, I just want to add, I have an accounting background, I've been an accountant since I was 17, and the current town moderator and the previous one would not have selected me for this, for that position. And I wanted to apply for several years, and I didn't, strictly because I knew that they wouldn't, they wouldn't appoint me.
Why?
Personal reasons and, and political reasons. I mean, I could get into it if you want.
Well, I think that's an assumption you're making.
Yeah.
You didn't try, you didn't try to go for the position, you're just assuming that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I assumed, and I think getting a fair, a fair hearing in front of a committee will actually bring more people in.
So, I, I just want to, I'm sorry, I just want to counter that, so, if you have this elected board, if you have this appointing board of elected officials, but your idea might disagree with all four of them, that's the same exact thing, as the moderator disagreeing with your political ideas, so you still have this possibility, it's, it's everywhere.
Yeah, well, you know, I didn't, I didn't say specifically political ideas, it was personal with these two.
Personal.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, so it could be the same thing with those four, because we all live in the same town, that's the tough part. So, like, it could be like somebody's neighbor, and you're like, I just don't like them because their grasses never cut, and they're like, I just don't want them, that's my opinion.
And I'm not saying.
And I'm also all for transparency, not just promoting it, saying I want transparency, I actually want it, as opposed to some others, so.
Right, and again, I'm not saying, I think it's great, if the, the town wants this, and we put the citizens' petition goes forward, and the town votes for it. put the citizen's petition goes forward and the town votes for it, I'm all for it. Not my fault, but--
I did have one extra question.
Just saying a personal opinion, yeah.
How different is this from the changes that were made, proposed in the charter change a couple of years back? Is it completely different?
Well, the charter--
I cannot answer that.
I can try to answer it. The charter commission would have eliminated the Finance Committee.
Yeah, and would have--
Okay.
And the town council would have had fiduciary responsibilities for the town.
So there's no need for a, the chief role of the Finance Committee is to make recommendations to town meeting, but the elimination of town meeting, you have no need for a Finance Committee. So there could have been like a Finance Subcommittee for the Town Council--
For the Town Council.
But it would have been sort of totally different.
I just wanted that, because I did, somebody did ask.
Madam Chair, can I just ask one question? Is there any changes of the proposal that I can maybe suggest to the Citizens Board, from this board? If there's any changes like all of that, this is like the one thing that really bothers me. Is there anything specific where it says, okay, I would, you know, if this was passed, is there one change that maybe members of the board would see and say, or would want to recommend?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate the question. I think my biggest issue, though, is that I am really uncomfortable with individuals staffing a board on which they would have influence or they would--
Be presenting--
Expecting influence perhaps when people on the board that they're nominated. And not so much even the nomination, I think that's one thing, but also the renewal, because I think that's where you're going to get into trouble, is where people are being renewed. Now they're starting to see the same people that are coming up, that are appointing them on their renewal are coming in front of them for their budgets. And to me, that's, that's where, you know, I don't, I don't think our neighbors are going to do that stuff, right? But I don't necessarily think it's something that we should introduce into the process when it's not there already, especially because I don't see there's, see that there's any real pressing issue to do this right now. Like, if we had, there were major issues with how the moderator was appointing the FinCon, then I would say, you know, maybe I'm biased because I was selected for FinCon. But I was also passed over twice for FinCon. And, you know, you know, no thanks to Bill Gavia, but I was passed over twice, you know, and just understood that, you know, he was elected, he has this responsibility, and he chose who we thought were better candidates. So I just think that, you know, it's not so much the appointment of new FinCon members, it's the renewals, and then when they start to see the same people coming in front of them to make, for their budget, for their budgets, I think that's when you, you know, it just, it creates a conflict that doesn't exist right now, and I don't know why we want to create that. So, let me just finish, Steve. But just to, just to answer your question, that seems to be kind of a fundamental part of the proposal, right? So I don't know if you can change that.
Yes and no, because the three major components of the three major appointing members do not have a budget. The assessors does not have a budget per se, the planning board does not have a budget, nor does the moderator have a budget, which you--
The moderator.
The moderator does not have a budget. The majority do, right? If the school, the Select Board and the School Committee need to be on this appointing committee, it's just, it is what it is. If I left one of them off, their heads would explode. They need to be on it. But, so how do you level out that appointing committee with the transparency? You add the three people that are elected that don't have tied to a budget. And that's what, that's what I was thinking. And I appreciate the feedback, and I understand your concerns. It's, I wanted to make sure that this came here, this was an idea that I came up with. Several citizens, after the last time I presented, several citizens approached me and said, oh, we think that's an idea. I still think it's, the citizen's petition is a wrong approach, and I'll tell you why. Because the great thing about town meeting is it's a working meeting. Meaning, changes can come from the floor, changes can, you know, modifications can come from there. If people don't want, say, if people say they want the chair of the Finance Committee to be on this instead of the assessors, they can make that from the floor. Citizens' petition will not do that. So that's why I would rather have seen this come from here and was work on it and then have it, so it could be opened on there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? Can we vote on this?
No, there's nothing to vote on.
Do you want to have--
Yeah, actually, Madam Chair, would I just make a motion to, could I make a motion, Madam Chair, to, if we select, to the Select Board to support the proposed article as is to go on to the warrant?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Maybe?
Thank you.
We also want to talk about the solar in our--
Yeah, I'll just let you know, there is a petition article to allow, right now, solar is not allowed in our 40, and someone has submitted a petition article to allow it in our 40. Basically, that's--
And it's a citizen petition, so it just goes on the warrant?
Right.
Madam Chair, I spoke to this individual, and the R40 is the smallest, it's 40,000 square feet. We can understand this, but it's, 40,000 is the minimum, but it also, if you have 13 acres and you're still R40, it limits you to this type of situation. And so that's why this individual is putting on there, and it makes sense, and I think the reason, the other R60, R80, all allow solar. And just so you know, what he's looking to do is add it, but to do policy and processes R60 and R80, which is special permit. So the planning board, it isn't like someone just put it up or put up a solar field, it still is a special permit, it still requires a special permit. So I just wanted to speak to that, just inform the board--
But again, we have no, if it's a citizen petition, it's, we have no say on it, right? All right, excellent. Any other business that wasn't put on the agenda? We do have the ARPA funding request.
That's, you make it so painful, the way you just say it. The rest of the world calls it ARPA. You call it AARP.
Free money, whatever, free money. Yes.
So there's three requests tonight. The Norton Business Association assistance for 15,000. The superintendent has said that they have now asbestos issues in the JCS and LGN. Connections coming up from the boilers are going up into the walls, and there's asbestos that needs to be removed, and they're looking for 50,000 for that. And the last one is, the Norton Police Department is looking to put a carport, solar carport in the back parking lot, and this would be to have a consultant to work with us on procurement to develop the IRFP. Once they come in to review the best option for the police department when it comes to the solar, whether they just lease the solar panels, lease the space out to a company, or whether they keep the solar that's generated, that's something that the company will analyze and give them their best options.
And Steve, should I mention, because I know yours is part of the Business Association, do you want to just briefly give a--
Yeah, very briefly, I--
I mean, it's really a replacement, it's what was being funded anyway, correct?
Yeah, we were getting funded for consultants, and that process has been moving forward, and we actually created the Norton Business Association. We're looking for funds to create website governing documents, recruitment of local businesses, legal assistance, and eventually we're going to file for the 501(c)(3). But that all takes time, money, and effort.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Mike, two things. Does the school have, the schools, I'm assuming they have their own capital budget line, that they, do they just push everything back to capital projects, back to our capital, the town's capital budget plan, or do they manage their own maintenance capital budgets of schools?
So any projects would be just like we do with our projects, capital requests?
Capital requests, okay. And does this fall within, does, would this fall normally, I mean, you put asbestos on anything and everyone's like, ah, right? I mean, does this fall, would this get prioritized in that capital plan normally?
Yeah, yeah, because it's a safety issue.
By law, yeah.
And Madam Chair, one last question. Is there a way, this solar project procurement services, is there a way to increase that and then put the fence around, the safety fence around the back that has been kind of pointed out a couple of times?
I talked to the chief, he said he may put that into his capital plan for next year.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The ARPA funding request.
She dropped it.
AR, I know, I'm using my Rs, I'm like, too close to Rhode Island.
Do we have to say each amount, should we say each amount?
You can just approve as--
As requested amount. So moved to approval of the proposed--
I abstain, I'm a principal, I'm a D.A.
Excellent, all right, Tammy, to report, let's move on.
You can move on.
I can move on, there's no report?
Nothing to report?
Just a couple of things.
I know, but that we have a guest that I want to move on to, so.
So we have, we have moved on to the next phase of the taking process for the bike trail, and all the notices have been sent out, people have been bringing back their paperwork so they can get their checks. They expect to go out to bid by the end of the month, and so moving forward that. And the senior center, they hope to go out to bid in the middle to the end of October for the senior centers.
Good. Select Board report in mail. Bristol County Advisory Board meeting update.
Yep. So as the representative of this board to that, we approved a budget of huge money, 27 million within the FinCon. Just to, just to put in perspective, we have about 4.14% of responsibility to fill that budget and paying towards that. The Bristol Aggie Schools just finishing the renovation project, they've upped their to about 100 students, 100 additional students, and they seem to be, going to be adding, that's going to be for the next couple of years, that many students per year. And the requirements of the new school required an increase of the school budget by almost $1 million over the previous year, which was, I questioned a lot, because I was concerned that that was going to keep happening, and they said, no, it was kind of a one-time expense. And last but not least, they did come to an agreement with the Teachers Association, which would have a 3% increase year over year. We averaged it out as about 5% increase. And that's it for the Bristol County Advisory Board. I did, as requested in the last FinCon meeting, I did reach out to the Chair of Finance Committee, let her know I was attending, because they were getting, the Finance Committee was getting a large number, stormed at them, and they just wanted to know why. I did not hear back from her, but I did let her know I was having a meeting and so forth, so. And personally, can I just ask, Madam Chair, can I just ask the town manager one thing? Mike, I know '23 is the start of negotiations of many employee contracts, I believe it's police, fire, so forth. Have you started your negoti, have you, have you started your new, have they chosen their negotiating committees, and have you sat down with them yet?
We have not.
Okay. Is civil service part in your ideas, removing civil service, something that you're going to try to talk to them and try to negotiate?
I would love to do it, and I hope that police and fire would love to do it, but, you know, we'll work on it and see.
If you could add it as maybe as one of the starting points, I think that would benefit. What civil service does is we're required, both police and fire are required to pull from civil service to hire, and both police and fire are having trouble hiring individuals. And we think that this might be, this is not an anti-union movement. I've asked many union members on top levels, the FOP, actually, the former president of the FOP, he said it was, he didn't really have a complaint on it, so.
And if I could just add to that, we're losing a firefighter to a known civil service department because they don't have to have a civil service solicitor they have to hire from, they can just take anybody from anywhere. So they are taking, this is the second person that we've lost that's trained going to another department because they want to go where they live. If they weren't civil service, we could deny it.
Madam, was that recent, how recent was that? Because I knew it was the other one, the person.
Just very recently, like last week.
And we couldn't invoice the list?
I know, we definitely got paid for it.
We got 24,000 for the other one, but this one's already through the calendar, we're in--
Okay, are there any other updates in the members? All right, quickly, I'd like to approve payroll warrant and invoice warrants as printed in our agenda. Next leading agenda date is September 7th. Does that, some could work for everyone?
There's a party, a party meeting at 6:30 right there, but I'll walk over after, because I have to go to that one.
Yes.
Ma'am, Lauren Goldberg said she could come to that meeting--
Excellent.
And so there'll be an exec session, just to go overall, any legal cases that the town has, legal update.
All right, excellent. And I apologize to our guest over there, Mark Altman, I want to introduce you to everyone, so come on over here and pull up a chair. I hate that we're set up the way we're set up, but I'm hoping that this can be just really a conversation, you know, Mark and I actually have not really, other than just when I go for my paraplegic adjustments, we've had quick conversations. But I'd like to take this as an opportunity, you know, Mark has served the town of Foxborough both as the chair on the Select Board and now a current member of the Select Board. And just, just to give some best practices and ideas and think about how we should be thinking moving forward to help sort of, just organize us in a better way, and you sort of took in a little bit of our, some of our, you know, town politics, I guess, if you will. So I just want to kick it off, and Mark, if you just want to talk about, just give a little bit of your background and how things have worked for you and how we can do a better job.
Well, thank you for having me here. In my seventh year on board, I served two years as chair during COVID, so they were kind of trying two years, to say the least. But, you know, in talking to Megan, it seems like, you know, you guys are looking to go in maybe a potential new direction, to sort of streamline, and I think in talking again, you've already started streamlining your meetings, ending a little bit earlier with some suggestions that I had for her over the last year or so, or the last few months, which is great, there's no need to be here till 12. She was amazed that we average getting out at 9:00, 9:30, even during the budget season. So I think she's come up with a few good ideas already in streamlining. Going forward, one of the big things, you know, we do is try to get input from everybody when it comes to the finance budget process going forward for the upcoming year. That's the big thing that everybody's mind, you know, you talked about, you know, $69 million budget, we have an $83 million budget. We try to get everybody's input.
Dang Gillette Stadium.
Don Gillette. That's a little bit--
You're the father dad.
It's not a horrible thing.
It's all right, it's all right.
Are we in trouble?
No, no, you're safe.
Come get it.
I apologize for interruptions.
Yeah, no, no worries. So, you know, with the budget process coming, you know, looming in front of us all, I think one of the things that Meg tried to ask me about is, how do we get ready for our budget season going forward? And I think the most important thing is getting input from everybody. We have a plan going forward, a calendar of when things need to be done. The first thing we do is we have a tri-board meeting. I think in listening to your meeting, you know, the hour I was here, the importance of having, like you were mentioning with the potential citizens' input, you know, having input from other committees. So for us, that's huge, having, we don't have a Finance Committee, we have an Advisory Committee, same thing, different term, sitting down, called a tri-board meeting, with the School Committee, Advisory, and us.
So it's School Committee, Finance--
And us.
And us, just the three.
Just a tri-board meeting. You know, there's other boards, but, you know, like I think you mentioned, you know, planning doesn't have a budget, you know, zoning, you really don't need them there. It's the two big stakeholders, which is the Select Board and School Committee, and certainly the Advisory Committee. I'll stay Advisory, but you guys know I mean Finance for you guys. You know, who are the ones that are going to vet that process down the road? You know, who are the ones that are going to vet that process down the road, especially when it comes to.
And who sets that agenda for that tri-meeting?
The chairwoman, oh, we have a chairwoman now and town manager sort of set that. Bill's been doing it. Our town manager, I know Mike knows Bill forever. You know, Bill's, that was one of Bill's big thing when he came on board, was making sure we have a calendar going forward. And he, he works with our chairperson for that. When we get together, I don't know if we have a timeframe yet. We're looking, I think, end of September, beginning of October to get our tri-board meeting. And it's really, and obviously who's sitting right next to us all is our finance director. And, and our accountant is sitting in that room also. And they're, they put up a plan. All right, this is what we've done in the past. This is what we potentially need this year. But we're also talking about a little bit of a five-year plan too, what we're doing, you know, what, what we're planning to do down the road. I can certainly get you guys an old calendar, what we did last year, so you guys can take a look at it. I can give that to Megan. And it just sets timeframes that we're all, you know, so you've got three big long tables, and this is what we all have to do going forward until town meeting when we need to approve, approve that budget. Advisory has their set schedule, and we try to work around them because once, once that budget process starts, advisory is going once a week for the next, you know, right up until embedding that entire process. Which is pretty cool. I guess maybe a couple of you have been on the finance committee before, before coming here. I never had that. You know, for me, it was a new and exciting experience my freshman year, but I, I think it's good having that experience being on, on finance or advisory before coming on to. Took me a little bit longer to grasp that budget, that, that, all those lines and all the, you know, that you fall asleep looking at that first couple of times you look at it. And it's just being proactive and doing things so that you're not scrambling on the other end. And transparency, you know, that tri-board meeting is televised. It's on, we, we do it through cable access. You guys cable access too, yeah. So it's, it's televised. Everybody sits back, sees what's going on, sees what our plan is. And that, that's the big thing this time of the year that we're already starting to prepare for.
Mark, can you talk about sort of the actual day-to-day Select Board meetings? And, you know, one thing that really resonated with me when we started talking about that I think, you know, again, in a town that's growing and, and, you know, there really isn't, you know, and, you know, it's not a small town where we all go to the town common and hang out. And so all of a sudden now we're in this big, you know, everyone's doing their thing. How do you manage as a select board, you know, you said to me, this, this is your business meeting? And how do you manage that with the notion of wanting to be participatory and wanting to know that we're a resource for the people that elected us? But yet, we also have to conduct business. And so where's that balance and how do those meetings look like in Foxborough?
Big balance is, for one thing, we're big on our website. You know, we have a website, everybody, you know, we have a board secretary that is very media savvy. She's very good. And, you know, she's getting everything on our website as quickly as possible. But that's the town website. She's, she's part of that too. So all the committees have their calendars on the website. All the committees are listed. All the people you can get in contact with, it's all listed, all up to date. And we push that all the time. Don't forget, you know, in our meetings at the end, don't forget we've got something coming up. Look at the website. Or if you have any questions, go to, go to the website. So.
Do you send that town alerts or is it just?
In terms of.
We have like an ability that I can get, you know, text messages and, you know, important town information or.
Not, I don't know if we've ever done that individually. We've done.
We're doing something better than Foxborough.
We've done reverse 911s before, you know, through the police and fire.
Right, right. Now, this was more.
But no, to any individual on their text, I don't know if we've ever done that.
We can sign up for Norton Alert, so I would get like.
Might be bringing something like that back. There you go. Learn something from you guys. But our, our meetings are, you know, as, as focused as yours was today, you know, moving the, the agenda, getting things discussed that needed to be discussed, but getting citizens' input's real important. You know, our first five minutes of our meeting is any citizen can come and.
So that, that was something that we used to do, and then I sort of pulled that back. But again, you recommend maybe.
Well, we, we, from seven to 7:05, we have citizens' input. So anybody could come in and talk. Now it's not an agenda item, so there's no two-way conversation. If, if someone brings up something that's important, then certainly the Chair can say, we'll have that as an agenda item and we'll bring that up at our next meeting or at the next potential time. Or if they bring something up and you guys, you can always refer it to the town manager. And a lot of times Bill will say, you know, that's something I'll take. Why don't you call me tomorrow morning?
That's something I was hoping to have happen with the office hours we're having.
Yep.
Right. So we started office hours on Thursday evenings from five to seven. Because that's when town hall is still, are still open.
And, and a select person will attend?
Yes.
Not all of you, but one will represent. Oh, that's a great idea too.
And again, so in terms of, you know, we talk about the Zoom and all that stuff. So you guys have gotten away from the web, you know, do web.
No, so, so there's three ways you can do citizens' input. You can email the board secretary. She'll read it. You can zoom in because we're still doing Zoom, but you have to let the secretary know, you know, ahead of time that you want to speak, just so she knows. And a lot of times the Chair, you know, anybody for citizens' input, and they'll look right over to Christina. Christina's saying, you know, nothing for today.
And that's just in general citizens' input and not pertaining to any item on the agenda?
No.
So that's separate? Okay.
That's just giving the citizens the opportunity to come and we'll go five meetings without anybody coming, and then we'll have a bunch of people come to one meeting.
I think we went on a year last year.
So we actually came, so. And they'll talk about anything. They'll talk about, you know, last person that showed up, we've talked about a person who passed away. Just wanted to let the town know, you know, through cable that this person passed away and was very, you know, maybe 20 years ago, very instrumental in all the ball table work he did, or she did, you know, in the community. And it's kind of nice. And, you know, we appreciate something like that.
So do you have your set calendar in terms of looking at the budget process and sort of saying, okay, between now and June 30th? For the most part, you've set all your dates.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And those will be set probably within the next four weeks.
All right. And those, is that set during the tri-meeting?
No, I think we'll have a draft by the, by the tri-meeting for everybody to, to see. That can be changed, certainly. But we'll have a draft.
But again, that, those meetings are included as part of the budget process, then this should be a joint meeting. This should be, so we're not.
A joint meeting. This is when school committee should have their budget done. This is where, you know, advisory starts taking over.
Yeah, Mike, Mike, from what I've understood, Mike already has this, and I'm not sure he did present it last, he, last year. He presented it last year.
Yeah. So the, our school budget, they have to submit their budget eight weeks before town meeting. My budget has to be submitted six weeks before town meeting. Capital, you have to appoint someone, by the way, at your next meeting to capital. And then first week in March, everyone has to have their capital request in. And then I'll submit all the requests that come in to the Select Board, the FinCon, everything that's requested.
So I think that's where we got tripped up last year was it was presented to FinCon and us all separate. And we're like, why don't we just have, we know that we're going to get these capital requests by end of March or beginning of March. So let's just set a meeting where that's going to be.
So ma'am chair, we typically don't do by department. We typically, one of the things that this, we're, we, Mike gives us an overview of what the increases are, what the percentage increases are, and what, what the cherry, the early cherry sheets are going to say what money's coming in from the state. That for us, one of the things that I think is important for us is that we, at that time, when Mike gave us the update early before he starts meeting FinCon, we basically say, Mike, one of the things that we as a board would like to do is prioritize park and rock. Prioritize HR, you know, so when he's playing out budget, he knows, okay, they want to see this. How can I see if that can happen? Early, but it's not like a line item. It's not like the line item. And tell me if I'm wrong here, Mike, but that's my understanding.
So, and, and I'm sure you'll probably agree with this, that in Foxborough, I'm sure the selectmen doesn't get involved in reviewing line item budgets. You have a meeting at the beginning and say what your priorities are. Sometime in November, we'll start talking about, look, this is what we think we're going to have for revenue. This is, the schools can have an increase of X percent. This is what the town's going to have. And then I'll develop a budget in between, you know, based on those parameters. But it's fine to have like one meeting at the beginning of the process to see what people's thoughts are. But there, I'm, I'm sure that you can go to finance committee meetings if you want, but you don't post joint meetings all through the budget process. You let the finance committee review them.
Well, a little bit of both, but my question to you guys are, is when, 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 does the finance committee go line by line?
They do.
They, they still do. So, so the chief of the fire department has to go in front of them and defend his, oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I thought.
The finance committee, we don't go line by line. They go through line by line. But we are basically have the basic, we're going to do 2% increase from all departments. And this is our priority. And I think we've gotten away from that a little bit, which I would love to see this.
We, we also got redundant where, where I feel like we're, you know, presenting on Monday to, you know, you're going to present on Monday, and then you're coming to us on Wednesday and presenting. And it's like, why aren't we just doing this all at the same time?
So I, I think that's an important thing in the budget process. The department heads present to the finance committee. Now, the Select Board can attend any meeting they want. You don't have to post a finance committee meeting. You can't deliberate, but you can attend any meeting you want. But the department heads shouldn't be coming to the Select Board again to present their line item budget.
Which is what they did last year.
Right.
Which was just crazy.
Two years, two years.
Because then you'd be attending.
Not last year, two years ago they did that.
Right, because I was, I.
Yeah, you were just on, you were just on. And we didn't do it last year, but we did it two years.
Yeah, it was painful. It was just, we were just watching the same thing in just a different venue.
Your, your finance committee meetings televised?
They are.
Big controversy in Foxborough. They're not. There's a lot of us that don't like that at all. They were televised during COVID, which would be great. Here I am, Chair, watching them vet police one week and fire the next, and I'm, we're all seeing it all. They went back to non-televising and again, you know, going back to, you know, the moderator, moderator doesn't feel that they should be televised.
You're talking about FinCon meetings?
Yeah.
FinCon's not televised. It's, it's, it's on YouTube. But it's not, I don't think it's televised.
It's been, it's been the past. It's been televised.
But I don't think, I don't think we're telling, like, my experience is during, mostly during COVID.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
By the way, and I said this, that's a huge problem for us.
Oh, no. I'm excited you guys are able to, to see it because it does. It saves a lot of time. We don't necessarily have to bring anybody else in. But we have always had the ability, if we didn't like something, or we could bring that person in too, to have them present it to us also. We don't want to duplicate either. We, we have that ability. The Chair has that ability.
How do we get a billion-dollar entertainment business that produces several million dollars of revenue a week?
We move the man's field line.
We might be able to have a tax base. How do we make that happen?
It's luck of the draw, I guess. They, 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 well, you probably, you guys probably aren't old enough. Maybe Mike is, that when Sullivan was looking for a track of cheap land somewhere way before you guys' time.
That was Foxborough Raceway.
That was Foxborough Raceway. You're absolutely right. And they had a chunk of land right next door. But they built the cheapest stadium in the.
But you guys didn't get the win, you didn't get the Win Casino that was presented.
Foxborough Casino back in 2011.
We, we, we could talk about that for hours. That was, that was a mess. That was a big controversy in town, the casino.
So what other big tips can you give for us and any other questions at the?
So, quick question. So in your Select Board meetings, how do you handle public participation in the agenda items? Do you, do you allow that? Do you not allow that? How does that, how does that?
Obviously, if it's a public hearing, you've got to listen to it. So we'll throw that, that stuff out. If someone gets duplicative and, you know, you could say, we've already heard that, but, you know, thanks for. Otherwise, we try to, you know, let people voice their opinion on certain things. Doesn't happen much anymore. You guys must see it too, you know, apathy in a, a society. A lot of people.
If it's a controversial.
But if it's a controversial issue, then it's the Chair's responsibility to make sure everything's understood ahead of time. She, he will, will allow people to speak, you know, maybe five minutes tops. Especially if you're seeing 12 people here, and you know, they're all going to be talking about one item. You know, we're going to limit you to, you know, two or three minutes. Please don't repeat something that someone's already said. But you try to be.
It's been hard because now we're coming back out of COVID, so it's not like in the past. I've been to Select Board meetings where it was just, you know, just in the room. So you had that sort of control of as people are coming and going, but now you just sort of like, what's going to be? It's just different, but.
And if people want to talk about a subject, you know, maybe a new license for someone that, that, that comes, they can zoom in too. You know, they certainly have to let the person who's in charge of figuring out all that stuff way, way above my grade. Know that you want to speak on it, but yeah, we always try to let the public involved as much as possible.
Thank you.
But I, but I think the key is just having that plan over the next five months going, going forward. So you guys stay, you know, focused on that plan. And one of the things, you know, that'll, that'll be that tri-board meeting too. Bill will come up with a plan. This, we're going to try to stick to 2.5%, you know, usually. And the school committee goes over a little bit, and we try to stay under a little bit, try to stay.
That was very neutral of you. That was very neutral of you.
I wasn't, I was amazed at seeing a, however, 78-line budget and school committee one line. But turn, why don't we get to see their slot?
Don't ask them that.
Yeah.
Totally autonomous by rule and mass design in Massachusetts. I was amazed at it first, yeah.
We appreciate you coming.
Yeah. And any other thoughts? Any other questions?
And Mike, I'm the honorary mayor, and I'm at the meetings, I take notes and put on my Facebook page.
Peter's our honorary mayor.
Honorary mayor.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Peter J. Wiggins.
Peter, I saw you scribbling and, and I looked down and I had no idea what you were writing. And, and I used to be a pharmacist. I could read doctors' hymns.
So that's our draft timeline so far, so.
Oh, so we have a draft timeline. Yes.
And I beg you, this year, do not put town meeting off till June, please.
July is okay.
May is good. Because when you put it off to June, the schools have to send out notices by a certain time to teachers that are going to be riffed. And by putting it off into June, then it becomes a burden on the financial team because they got to close out the end of the year, plus they got to prepare and send everyone their budgets for the new fiscal year. And they're doing all this in June and it just becomes a burden.
And that's huge, you know, working backwards from, from the finance director. And what they have to do in their department coming backwards, they're a huge input into our, into our calendar because of the different protocols and timelines they have.
And the only reason to hold it up is if you were waiting for state aid, but we never get any benefit out of the state aid anyways. We get a little tiny bit.
And I think somewhere along the line comes in like a couple of weeks before town meeting anyway. You know, somewhere at the beginning of May.
Mark, what is, what is Foxborough's website communications? Do you have communications director? Do you have someone who runs the websites exclusively? That's their job? You know, kind of, how does, how does, what's the structure of that communication system?
Yeah, that's one of her jobs. That's one of Christina's jobs. She's the media relations at, at town hall. So that's one of her jobs. She's also, she's not the town mayor, but she does. So that's one of her jobs, she's also, she's not the town mayor, but she does all the scribing for the board's elections meeting. So she'll be there typing away. And then we have a director of IT that involves our cable and all our IT stuff. We have all our, we're all on paper now, everything's online. Did you just get them? It's so cool to be, I remember going into town hall on a Sunday and picking up packets. I'm sure all you guys remember too, and to just be able to go online and get everything that Mike sent you.
I miss my packets.
I like the paper.
You're killing all those trees.
Yeah, you're killing a lot of trees, so.
I'll go play one. But what program are you guys, are you guys going to use?
What what?
Program to Cooley.
Uh, we're not, yeah, Dropbox, we're not doing the board pack or whatever, which would be nice, but the Dropbox is.
We want board docs. And Mike, you can call Christine anytime and, or Bill, talk about how efficient that really is for us and how it fits into, you know, the whole IT system in the town too, because that's kind of important. And anybody, there's also, you can go into the finance department and at any time see where our budget is, how much we've spent, that they totally put everything in our website too weekly that you can always see. Any, any, any citizen can see exactly where we are on August twenty-fourth, you know, 2022.
We get a report from our finance, from our accounting director where we stand and so forth. He is, we are blessed to have James and his team, they've been with us for twenty-five years, twenty, I think, twenty-five years, yeah. Yeah, he's just, he's, he's.
But that's not pushed out on the website.
It is not pushed out on the website.
Yours is pushed out on the website.
On the website, yeah.
So that might be something, I mean, we're getting it anyway, why not?
Yeah, it's public information, so, you know, and again, transparency, you know, no one can complain that we're trying to hide anything. It's right there, yeah. But, you know, we've, we've been lucky with the Patriots, but we've, you know, we've had some challenges up there too. You know, but we work well with them.
Yep, and there was a time that the town of Foxborough banned Monday Night Football in Foxborough from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen ninety-five because back in the days, there were some randomness at the old Sullivan Stadium when Monday Night Football came to town.
Really?
How are you this?
Oh, yeah, really?
Traffic issues, yeah.
It was very good, that night was my, it was versus Miami, it was versus Miami Dolphins. It was versus the Miami Dolphins and they, you know, fight galore that night.
Yep, was the Patriots and the Jets back in?
Was it Jets?
Nineteen seventy-six.
Wow, that was the Dolphins.
Cats, Jets back in.
I'm going to go with you on that.
Again, I really appreciate, this was just helpful and, you know, I'd like to do more, like we should sort of spot check on other towns and sort of how they're working, I think this is super helpful and, you know, hopefully we can take something away from this.
I hope so, and, you know, call me, be happy to come back if you need to, if you need any information, let me know, it's all public information. But if I can get it for you, as soon as we get our calendar, I'll send it over to you, just so you can take a peek, you know, how we do it. You know, we also have a moderator that appointed, it was an interesting conversation you guys had with, you know, the town moderator. We're one of the towns where the moderator picks the, picks everyone too.
Who's your town moderator?
Frank Spleen.
Oh, okay, yes.
Frank, he's been doing it for a number of years and before him, his dad did it, Garrett Spleen, wow, for a couple of decades, so, yeah.
All in the family.
Yeah, it is.
Well, excellent, well, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Help out a little bit.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Hey, look at you, getting help by nine again.
No, this was a longer one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can you explain tonight?
We're closing at eight fifty-six.